There we go. Brilliant. Well, a big thank you for joining us today. So you've come to a breathe and recover session where we're going to be using some breath work to energize our bodies, get ourselves into the day, but also find what it is to relax ourselves through our breathing. And we're going to be very quick, so I'm appreciating it's a lunch break for a lot of people that have tuned in. So to start off with, just so you know who and us you're working with. My name's Francesca Bingley. Obviously, I'm a yoga teacher, but I'm also a registered nurse. And my background is actually from spinal. So that's me.
Hi, you guys. My name's Lauren Sullivan. I'm also a yoga and breastwork teacher, but I have more of a background in working with trauma. So I don't know if any of you guys were on the last sessions. I don't want to repeat myself too much. But I have predominantly worked with military and veterans and their families. And over the last year or so, we've come together and we've started working together so that we can offer some more, yeah, alternative practices for people. So over to Ian.
So I'm Ian, a living yoga method teacher as well. I'm also a paramedic in my part. So I've been practicing yoga for about five years. And I've really become interested, really focused on the breath and how we can use this to improve health and your whole system, something so simple that's not necessarily always talked about. But yeah, that's me. And I'll hand you back to Francesca and we can start.
Yeah, we can start. Okay. I think we've had one other person to join. So just go with it. We're literally just coming into the first part of the practice now. So you haven't missed anything. Got interesting works today. Okay. So most importantly, coming into any type of breath work or yoga practice, get comfy. I'm sure you've been unconsciously arranging yourselves already without really thinking about it. But make sure that you're feeling comfy. So whether that's getting a grabbing extra cushion, just noticing how you're sat, how you're even feeling like in the posture, maybe you don't have a lot of movement, but just notice how you are and see if you can get a little bit more comfortable, even 1%. And start to notice how you're breathing. So just come into that sense of it works for everyone, no matter what level of spinal injury we may have in our system. It's noticing to begin with how your system is, just meeting it today. So there's no right or wrong with this. It's just meeting your whole system, your whole body, how it is today. Okay. So I'm going to ask you now to close your eyes. Noticing the breath, just allow it to be natural. For some of us, it may be an automatic breath. For others, we can actually work with the power of our breath. It doesn't matter. Either way, you're switching your attention to how you're breathing. And we're going to come inside the feelings we have, whatever they are. So that can be physical, mental, however it feels in your system. And ask yourself what it is that you're looking for from this practice today. So this is about connecting to your, your drive. What is it that you're looking for? And we're using this as part of something called the namaste prayer. So it's about understanding ourselves of what we're looking for and being thankful for that, for that energy that comes up within us, that wants to connect, that wants to engage with our lives, that we want to find ways of working with the bodies we have now. So with that, we take an internal bow. So whether that's a physical movement, maybe it's the slight tilting of our chin. But we're mentally taking a bow to ourselves. Recognizing that we've shown up, we're thanking ourselves for that. We're also taking an internal bow to each other that we get to do as a group. We get to encourage and inspire each other. And we take an internal bow to the methods, to the tools that we get to practice together today. And as always, I start with the word meaning thanks in Sanskrit of namaste. Okay. So very gently, keeping your eyes closed as much as you can, start listening to your own breath. You can't get this wrong. It's just watching, becoming aware of the breath that your body is creating. Paying attention to how it comes in in its own time. How it goes out in its own time. You don't need to do anything with it. So it's giving you a little bit of feedback on how your system is, how your body is, your mind is today. And you're just meeting it. So just noticing in whatever way you can. So maybe that's a sense of the breath coming in through the nose or mouth, if you can, through the nose and out. And then very slowly, we're going to start working with this breath. So gently, we're going to start learning our first simple breath. It's called the ah breath. And we do this by as much as we can, taking a slow breath in through the nose. But then when it comes to the exhale, the out breath, we take it out of the mouth. So it looks and sounds like a sigh, like ah breath out of the mouth. So again, it doesn't need to be in time with me or with anyone else. It's just for you. You work with your own inhales. It comes in. And then as you exhale, it's out of the mouth like a sigh. So slowly, slowly allowing the breath to soothe part of the nervous system. Exhaling out of the mouth and it's ever that time for you. So it can sound a little bit like the ocean on the shore. So in through the nose and out through the mouth. And it doesn't matter if it's a very short cycle. The point is that you're connecting with that inhale through the nose, noticing as it fills up. And the exhale, whenever it comes for you, you're drawing the exhale out as much as you can by using the ah breath out of the mouth. You're doing really well. Slowly engaging with the breath. Noticing in whatever way you can, any changes in how your system's feeling. Noticing any tension that the body, the mind might be holding. And allowing it to go with your exhales. So consciously thinking, okay, let go, relax. Sigh, ah breath out. So again, it's reminding yourself it's in your own time. Listening to the feedback that your breath is giving you. And noticing any changes as the breath starts to work with our nervous system. Doing really well. Okay. So probably noticing that some of the tensions dropped from the system. Maybe feeling a little bit more relaxed. So we're now going to switch that energy. So just allowing yourself to relax, let go of that breath, maybe one or two more of the ah breath. Just letting yourself relax. And then we're going to come into something called double breathing. So this one, you're probably going to want to gently open your eyes to see what it looks like. Because it might be a little bit different for you. Okay. So it works whether you have control of the belly or not. It doesn't matter because the body will still be breathing from the belly. But to show you the full version of it, we're going to be doing two short inhales into the nose. And it'll be two short exhales out of the mouth. And the place we're trying to breathe into is the lower belly. And the reason we're doing that, if you've got control of it, you're going to be coming into a deeper part of the lungs. It will open things up more and it's going to be energizing your system. So with that, we're going to try and come in in our own time. Because I'm sure everyone's breath might be slightly different. You work with it as best you can. So if you can find a bit of a rhythm, come in time with me if you can. But as it goes, trust with the sound, because your body will know how to do this. You're prompting it. Even if you feel like there's not much that you can control from down below, it will still be able to join in on what's above with the nose and the mouth. Okay. So we're going to do this very gently. So you just simply relax. And in your own time, we're going to start with two exhales out of the mouth. Away you go. It'll be then into the nose. Out of the mouth. In through the nose. Out the mouth. Doing really well. Trust in the process. Three more. Into the nose. We're giving it one more. And then exhale, ah breath out. Like you just were. As much as you can, when you feel the prompt, inhale through the nose, come up. Fill up as much as you can. And then it's an exhale, ah breath out of the mouth, just like you were. And relax. Allow the system to become still. Close your eyes if you haven't already. And turn your attention inside. And in whatever way you can, bring your awareness into your body. That could mean the back of your head. Could mean to your collarbones. Could mean to your chest. Hips, maybe even toes. It's coming into your body and sensing the energy that's there. So you're coming into your first experience of energized stillness. You're making a switch from thinking to feeling. Experiencing the very energy that we're made of. So we're gently using our breath to energize, to amp up our systems. We're going to take another of these rounds of our double breathing now. Okay. So very gently, again, notice if you're holding any tension, allow it to drop as we come into our next round. So again, come in time when you can. You just join in as you can. We're starting with two exhales out of the mouth. Away you go. In through the nose. Two parts to the breath. Nice and steady. Three more. Last one. And now exhale, ah breath, empty out as much as you can. And then allow that natural rebound up, filling up, inhaling through the nose. And in your own way, exhale, ah breath, soften, become easy. Let the breath become completely natural in the background. Close your eyes if they're not ready. And bring your attention again to your energy. To the areas that are quiet. Sometimes even silent with energy. Or to the areas that maybe are quite loud today. So you're switching your attention from your thoughts and putting them specifically into your system, into your body, in whatever way you can. You're being with the energy that you're made of. You're using the power of your attention to go into your system. Connecting with what it is that's bringing that life into today. We're going to take one more round of our double breathing together. So again, enjoying, allowing the process to change in the system each time as it becomes more familiar. Okay. So again, we're going to do this all together, but you come in in your own time when you notice your breath's ready for this. Okay. So nice and simply starting with two exhales out of the mouth. Away you go. Nice and steady. Trusting your system. Mind your own pace. Doing really well. Two more. Last one. And then exhale, ah breath, empty out. As much as you can, allow a rebound inhale to come up. Filling up without coming. And then exhale, ah breath, in your own time. Release, relax, emptying out. And allowing yourself to come into your energized stillness. So you're connecting to the energy that's already in your system. This was all there 10 minutes ago, but you've tapped into it. So you've been consciously working with the very energy that we're all made of with your breath to wake it up. So we're noticing whatever is occurring in our systems today. And we're also noticing whenever our minds like to try and wonder. And that's okay. It's just when you catch yourself, you just bring that awareness back into your system, into your body, in whatever way you can. So we're connecting again and again to the energy that we're made of. Okay. So keeping your eyes closed. We're going to use our breath now to start bringing that energy inside even more. So we are both energized as well as relaxed. And we're going to do this by using our breath more and by using our noses as much as we can. So simply paying attention to your breath, coming in and out through the nose as much as you can. If you need to use your mouth, it's okay, but you might want to play with how it is in your system for this. But we're going to be using the yujai breath. So this breath is about finding a slower, longer breath that comes from the back of the throat. So think of the whisper muscles that if we're trying to talk quietly or if we're trying to fog up a glass, so if we're making a sound that sounds a bit like it's a bit like the ah breath, think of how you're trying to fog up a glass. But we're going to try and do that through our noses. So it can take a little bit of getting used to. That's okay. So the way we do this is think constriction in the back of the throat. Slowly, as much as you can, drawing the breath through the nose, constriction in the back of the throat. And then likewise, as the breath leaves, it comes hopefully out of the nose. And again, keeping that constriction, the whisper muscles engaged at the back of the throat. Allowing the breath to become longer in length as it leaves. So working with, this is called the yujai breath. So it's a slow breath in, in its own time, slow breath out. You're doing really well. So following the breath in your timing. It doesn't need to be with us. It's listening to what your body needs, creating that little bit of constriction so that the breath gets to be in your body a little bit longer. And likewise, as it leaves, it gets to be a smooth, slow exhale out of the nose. And the reason we're using the nose is that it's got a lot of properties where it's going to warm the breath for us. It's going to moisten it. It's going to give more of a chance for nitric oxide to also build up. And all of these help our secret system. So just by breathing through your nose, you're already benefiting your system. So allowing your breaths to guide you. Now, as you're following this breath, follow its way inside. So noticing how it's changing the way you're feeling. The energy quality, so that we're slowing things down, we're allowing things to become calmer. This is a gradual process of telling our system it's safe. It can relax. It has these wonderful long breaths, almost mimic when we're at our most relaxed state, even in sleep. It's allowing our nervous system to get the message from our breath, from our breathing. For it to soothe itself. Okay, we're using a few more of these. Just noticing again how your system responds to it. That you're in control. Working with your breath. Okay. So we've soothed with our breathing again. So we're going to use now a little bit more energy with our breathing before then we come into our meditation practice. So the way we're doing this is with what we've just done before, with a very gentle, light touch double breathing round. So again, we're going to bring a little bit of energy in, but this time around, just notice where you were trying. So try and dial it down, make it 50% less effort. So if you've been really working with the breath, dial it down, make it easier for yourself. Okay. So we're going to come into one round of double breathing, nice and gently. Again, join in in your own time. We're going to start with two exhales out of your mouth. Away you go. Nice and paced. Doing really well. Do two more. The last one. And then exhale, ah breath, emptying out in your own way. And then allow the rebound inhale in your own time, let it come in. And then exhale, ah breath, soften, soothe, relax, drop any tension. Allow yourself to be still as we come now into our 61 points body rotation. So this is about sending our awareness around the body. Receiving any feedback that's there. And a really important point for yourself is to acknowledge if there's an area that is silent or maybe it's very quiet. There might be something there that's very, very quiet. And maybe there are areas that are loud. That is all part of it. It is all feedback. So whatever you're experiencing, it's feedback to you, even if that part, you're like, I can't hear anything now. That's okay. Okay. So bringing your awareness as much as you can inside, closing your eyes if you haven't already. And bringing your awareness to the point between your eyebrows. So focusing as much as you can on the point between your eyebrows. Now moving down, creating a pathway to the base of your throat. Now we go over to our right shoulder. Right elbow. Right wrist. Right thumb. Index finger. Middle finger. Ring finger. Little finger. Right wrist. Right elbow. Right shoulder. Base of throat. Left shoulder. Left elbow. Left wrist. Left thumb. Index finger. Middle finger. Ring finger. Little finger. Left wrist. Left elbow. Left shoulder. Base of throat. Traveling down, center of chest. Right chest. Center. Left chest. Center. Navel. Pubic bone. Right hip. Right knee. Right ankle. Right big toe. Second toe. Third toe. Fourth toe. Little toe. Right ankle. Right knee. Right hip. Pubic bone. Left hip. Left knee. Left ankle. Left big toe. Second toe. Third toe. Fourth toe. Little toe. Left ankle. Left knee. Left hip. Pubic bone. Navel. Center of chest. Base of throat. Point between your eyebrows. Now slowly from this point, expand your awareness to go throughout the whole of your body. Be in the whole of your body. Whole body. So you're connecting with the energy, your awareness that takes in the whole of your system, your body, your mind. As it is at this moment. And slowly now, bring your awareness and that attention back to your breathing. And allow that awareness to come into your center. So this could be bringing that awareness to our core. Could be our heart. Could be our bellies. It could be our mind. It's wherever it feels like your center for you. So bringing your awareness to your breath. Consciously working with it now. If you can, using a little bit of the yujai breath, so creating that little bit of constriction in the back of the throat. And engaging gently with the breath as you draw the breath in to that space where you feel like you on the inside. So bringing a gentle breath into your core. And as the breath comes out, sending it out from your core. And with every breath that comes in and out. We're working with what it is that we need. So bringing in what we need. And releasing what we don't. So that might mean bringing some energy into our system. And releasing the stress. The strain, whatever the worries are that we're carrying today. Working and watching the breath as it comes in. Working and watching the breath as it comes in and as it goes out. So using every part of the breath, drawing in what we need, letting go of what we don't. So whatever it is that your system's experiencing at this moment, the space for it, you can work with it just as it is. So allowing yourself to feel what it is that's there. Noticing if there's any preferences. That are okay. But again, it's allowing yourself to notice, giving yourself space to feel what's coming up. It's all fuel. So we're going to get a few more of these breaths. So using the yujai breath as much as you can. As we're going to slowly come towards the end of the practice. So noticing if there's any sticky points with the breath, that's okay. Just keep choosing the yujai breath. Relax and releasing any tension whenever you find yourself exhaling. Drawing the energy that you need in for your day, for your life. Using the exhales to drop the tension. To let go of that energy. We've got three more of these breaths in your own time. Allowing yourself the process of letting go. Maybe one more breath for some. And then as a way of closing the practice, we do this all together in whatever way you can. Allow inhale to come in. And it's an exhale, ah breath, out of the mouth. Dropping any tension with it. Letting go of any trying with the breath, allow it to be natural. And we come to a close the way we came in. So we use the namaste prayer again. So this is where we take an internal bow to ourselves for the energy we've brought, the practice, the concentration. So really acknowledging that you showed up. You brought that. We take a bow to each other. But it's far easier to try something new, to have energy. When we practice together, we encourage each other. And taking a bow to the method itself. It's an incredible toolkit that we get to use to work with our own systems. Taking a deep bow to you. Namaste. Well done. Okay. Thank you. So well done. Try something. Oh, thank you. Just checking in with people from the people I can see that everyone.